Okay, we're gonna get started at seven o'clock. Thank you all for coming. I wanna call the meeting to order. And we'll have our vice chair, Janice Snyder, read the official announcement about the hearing.
Thank you. To be published in the Journal Inquirer, this was dated April first, two thousand and twenty four, the legal ad for the town of South Windsor. Notice is hereby given that the South Windsor Charter Revision Commission has set Wednesday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, at seven P M. In the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, fifteen forty Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, Connecticut. As the time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on suggestions for revisions to the town charter. This was dated at South Windsor, Connecticut, May March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, attested to by Catherine Sinner. She's the executive assistant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jan. We're gonna begin the public hearing tonight on the charter revision. When you come to the podium, just please sign your name and you can be give us your name and address and you can begin your input. Ted, come on in.
I believe all three of these young ladies want to speak.
Okay.
Tom Dillon, thirty-four, Harvard Road. I saw today that there was gonna be a meeting, and I know I did not know it was a public input.
Yes.
Which is fine.
Yes.
It works for me. While I know that it's like a charter revision, I don't know how long it's been since the last charter revision, probably never.
Fifty years at least, yeah.
Okay, two?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. Oh, those are pretty years.
Wow.
I do know that you need to fix out some of the stuff that's in the charter, spending caps, things of that nature to give us the freedom of government. Okay, 'cause I'm sure it says nineteen seventy-eight. Spending fifty bucks is a whole lot different. Spending two, three hundred dollars is a whole lot different. Don't over expect to spend for that. The one thing I wanna say is, I wanna have a revision or an addition to the charter of our referendum on the town budget. I would like to have two automatic referendums built into the charter. So that the town budget automatically goes to the taxpayer. Don't care the cost. This last time, then we have the reasons that I say that, and then I would like to have a follow-on referendum, first referendum, fans. And then at that point, I wanna have the ability to have free writing referendums by getting signatures by the taxpayer. This last tax cycle, I don't care how you say it, we got those. Largest tax increase I'm told in the state of Connecticut's history. And I have no ability or no other ability to do anything about it except to take it. Evidenced by the complete switch from parties. It went from a super majority in Democrat to a super majority in Republican.
So before we go down that road, and I I'm gonna let you speak.
I just give you a reminder.
But can you just explain to me what you mean by free writing?
Free writing, I have to get three hundred signatures to force a third referendum.
Okay.
I have to get three hundred signatures to force a.
Three, three separate timed, or you just want a third option?
I I understand there's gotta be a limit to it, but if I want two automatic referendums, so goes the taxpayer, because right now we're voiceless.
Two automatic, okay.
Two automatic, right now we're voiceless beyond the ballot box. It's not always a good thing to put your specialty in other people's hands. As evidenced by the largest tax increase in state history.
Do you have like a timeframe in mind? Because we did talk about this kind of at our public, or at our meeting last night.
Do we say the budget?
We have to pass the budget by May twenty-second. So we have to, if we do start doing referendums, we gotta start backing up the process farther.
What's your thought? Yeah, what's your thought on?
Every two weeks, do you want?
Every two weeks. I don't care if we do it every week. Do you know that you have to pass the budget by a certain time?
Yep.
I wanna have a five-week cycle before that, where the town has to pass a budget and state that this is what they want to have for ballot. And then, you have one week, you have an automatic referendum. It may shut down because the people make a long vote, saying we love this budget. It's done deal. People accept the budget. We're good. And now gives another week for the high rocks. To work out their budgets to get them to a better number for the people to go vote.
Okay, Tom, you're saying town budget, are you including the board of editing that?
Yeah, the county town budget.
Okay.
Oh, I lose.
So, so together.
Passes a town budget.
Right.
That includes a dollar figure for the government side and for the school side. How Matt Maniscalco, not Matt Maniscalco, how Mike Maniscalco watches and works with his money and works his budget, so to that.
Are you thinking separate line items?
Nope.
Theoretically, the board budget can pass and the town wouldn't, just all one?
Send all together.
The bottom number.
It's all one budget.
Overall, yeah, okay.
We're given a final figure that is, that's come up with nine, potentially six people in the town. Right? If you do a super majority.
Right.
Pass six, three.
Right.
To a certain number, and evidenced by this last budget. I mean, there's no other way to put it, we got those. Okay?
Can I ask? Because we have talked about this. How, one of the concerns that I have, my past experience on the council, is when we do our budget. And we do it for about two months, we go line by line with every single department.
Right.
I look in the audience, there's almost nobody there. How do you envision us engaging the public? Educate themselves line by line on these budgets and coming in and understanding and participating in that process?
See, I don't necessarily know that you wanna do that with me, because I've committed enough slouches. The school system, for example, the school system has a charter to teach children certain things by stipending, am I correct? We expended above, above, beyond that excess in eighty courses and other activities, right? Twenty, yeah, twenty percent of our kids graduating fourth grade at low-grade level, which means they're either eleven, ten, or ninth grade levels. That's atrocious for the amount of money that we throw at the school system. I know for a fact that if you give zero, like a car with zero percent budget this year, it's still bigger than this. It's provided quality and space. I would think right this company, not like I saw in the state. It was all gas. What's spending in this town is not a reason, it's not a control. And what you do is tie the hand to the taxpayer by not giving them a referendum. If, if ten people show up, because there's a lack of, 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 seven of those, they'd be accepted as budgeted, that's a job. That would be, the town people deciding to secure that figure here of the budget. You can also have four thousand people show up for a budget here.
Holy, holy shit. I was that loud without a microphone? Got it. You want me to start, want me to start fresh?
No.
Nothing.
So, the, I can't mandate the level of participation. The level of participation in elections, to me, is abysmal. But I can't force someone to vote. They only have the guaranteed legal right to vote. If somebody stays home and says they don't wanna vote on the budget, then they're necessarily a yes vote. For whatever budget has been put in front, in in front of you.
Right.
But right now, we do not have any way to curb back a crazy, crazy tax increase. And if you do that, people like my son and his family will not be able to afford to stay in this town. I'll be very honest. I've told my son to get the hell out of here, because it's out of control. The state of Connecticut is out of control. You can't continue to raise property taxes. Let's say someone had a house that was worth three hundred thousand dollars. Their taxes were approximately eight thousand dollars last year. Rough numbers. With the last tax increase of last year, the taxes went up three thousand dollars. With the proposed school budget alone, because I understand the town manager is somewhere at the one-point-something version. Kate Carter didn't get the idea that you can't have a seven percent increase. I believe she's over seven percent. During a phone conversation about the school lights at the high school football field, she's indicated to me that it was her intention of probably having seven thou, uh, seven percent increases in this, in the future. So that's eight thousand plus another three, which makes that man's taxes eleven thousand, which even if you say twenty-five hundred bucks, that makes it thirteen fi, uh, thirteen-five. Another three thousand on top of that, sixteen-five. How long do you think people can live in this town? How long until they revolt? You can't, and then you're gonna go and if they don't pay the taxes, you're gonna take their home. It's, oh, listen, I know that the system in this town is broke, where in regards to building and being able to have infrastructure and everything else. But if you don't curb it and give the, all I'm asking for is you give the taxpayer, remember taxpayer, it's my money. I can go to Disney six times this year with my kids at fifteen grand to pop. That's my decision to make, right? But taxes are not my decision to make. And if you overtax us and don't give us a chance to scream foul and say you must reduce the budget, or we are gonna have another referendum in a week and vote down that budget. You have to give the people a voice. Isn't that what this is about, democracy, or at least a republic? To where you have a voice in your government? Why does it have to stop? You're, you're doing the charter revision. Why does it have to stop? On election night? I mean, why would anybody be afraid of a, of a referendum? Why would this committee not put forth a referendum option? It's the taxpayer deciding their future. Now, if twenty-five people show up and vote yes to the budget, and I'm the only one that votes no. Is that not democracy in action as far as the taxes? We have a perfect example in the last year's budget. And I'm, and I'm not being partisan, but it was the most outrageous increase that I've ever had in sixty-three years in this town, probably forty-five paying taxes. My son and his family cannot sustain living here. And I don't care how rich you are. Most of us are not like wealthy, making three, four hundred thousand a year. People are making it on eighty grand. Coupled with the way inflation is and everything else, that adds forty percent, thirty percent, whatever number you wanna say. Shit is expensive. Would you agree? And when it comes time to putting it on the tax bill, without a, and I've said this at the council meeting. And I've said actuarial audit. I, I guess it's a intrinsic audit. You don't know where Mike Maniscalco is spending his money, and you don't know where Kate Carter is spending their money. You don't know if it's wise or not. And then the town council is supposed to be coming in here and going, boom, well, Kate asked for seven, so we're just gonna give her five. You don't even know if that's needed as a town council in this town, because they don't delve that deep. They don't. You know when you were on the school board?
I was, yeah.
The superintendent put forth a budget, you agreed on a percentage increase. It was never a decrease. And bam, the taxpayers are forced with it. Now, it was typically a two or three percent increase. People were getting, people were getting some raises. When's the last time any of you guys got a seven percent increase in your wages? Consecutively, year after year. You guys have an opportunity to put something in the charter that will not hurt the ta, the town. It gives the taxpayer a voice to say, holy crap, we can't afford this. Or they're gonna say, I think it's fantastic. And I think that this program's worth it, that program's worth it. Well, that's democracy. Why would you not put that in your charter revision?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I feel like Thomas Jefferson a little bit.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's up next? Tom, you signed in, right?
I did not, but I will.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who would like to speak next? One of our students, or are you just here to observe? I'm not sure.
That's a theory.
All right, okay.
Tom, since you're still up there, a question. In regards to you say when do you referendum have the public vote? If the referendum doesn't pass the first time, are you saying the charter have a public hearing again before the next referendum? So for every referendum comes a public hearing, the vote goes out, it doesn't pass.
I'm concentrating on my road and.
I can't have a question if I get re-ruled, if I can.
No, no problem.
I have one goodness.
Yeah, come on up.
All right, go ahead.
You're talking about the referendum, should be up to the public, the voters should vote on the referendum, on the budget. Doesn't pass. You're saying there should be another public forum in regards to that, and then prior to next.
Let's say I'm the town, I'm the taxpayer.
I'm gonna step down.
Yeah, you're gonna, here you go.
I do, sir.
All right.
So let's say that I'm the town, I go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's say that I'm the town and I have a complete discretion on your spending. You're screwed. Um, if we have a first referendum and it fails.
Right.
Let's say you wanna raise taxes seven percent. Taxpayer come out and says, nope, not seven percent. It is up to you to have a backup plan in place.
Right.
Now we're worried about timeliness.
Correct.
You're worried about, you have to have a backup plan that if they don't accept that, what's our next budget gonna be? Is it gonna be five percent? Is it gonna be four percent? Don't care. That's on you. You're the manager. You're the town. That's why you get paid big bucks.
So let me ask you another question in that vein. So say.
I feel like Supreme Court, this is cool.
Um, so it doesn't pass.
Right.
They were four referendums deep and it still hasn't passed. There comes a point in time. Thank you, Andy.
Okay.
There comes a point in time on both the town and the board side that we have contractual obligations.
Don't care.
Salaries. You have to care, because now those teachers and employers are gonna sue us.
Well, I don't care. You still have to pay them. It doesn't mean that I have to give you money to pay them. Kate Carter.
Then how do you expect us to run on a deficit?
Well, let me.
Because we can't.
Let me tell you. Kate, Kate Carter has a eighty-eight million budget, right now, I believe. She wants ninety-three. She has contractually, contractual obligations of two point five million dollars. We could give her eighty-eight million dollars. She's still gonna pay that two point five million dollars in contractual obligations. She has to find savings in other departments. When I was a municipal employer, employee, three times the town came to us and said, we're having lean tax years, we need your help. We need you to take a zero percent increase this year. We added three percent or a two and a half percent increase guaranteed in the contract. But to work in part with the town, we took a zero percent increase. Cost me money. Town had to pass their budget. Town had to work some, some miracles. It's not my decision how she does it. If you don't tell me with an eighty-eight million dollars that Kate Carter has fluff there, that she can, how about she lay off one of like four hundred administrators? I think half the budget this year is for administrators, not for staff that's actually going to, with personnel, not with staff that's actually going to instruct. It's not my business how Kate Carter does it. It's not my business how Mike Maniscalco does it. I'm the taxpayer. I say that's too rich. I would advocate, I went to the new council when they were sworn in and said, please tell the department heads to hold back half of that seven, or ten point two million dollars they got last year. Hold back half of it, because next year is gonna be a lean year. It's up to them to manage their budgets. It's not up to me. So if I say, let's say, we'll go with a seven percent number, because that's the, the most favorite one now. If, if the town wants to do a seven percent increase, taxpayer has the right to vote. Taxpayer says no. So all taxpayer has to say is, it's too rich. It's up to you to come up with a secondary budget number, not me. You may wanna have longer period of time between the referendums. I'm not telling you timeframe, but you would think you'd have to have at least a week. Then it's up to you. Well, I, I advocate for two, but that would mean the budget process would have to start sooner. That's not on me. That's up to you guys to figure out what a fair timeline would be. You've all done budgets at one time or another. I have to do budget in my house all the time, and that includes paying taxes and planning for the future and putting a roof on and maybe putting in a furnace. That's what adults do. They plan and they figure. So if the taxpayer votes down the first referendum at seven percent, it's not up to me to come up to a number. It's up to them to come up to a number that they think will pass. Let's say they come in at five percent. Second automatic referendum is no. That means they have to come up with a number that they think would pass if there are signatures for a third. I'm not looking to tie hands forever. But I don't think the first two referendums, you should have to go out and get signatures. I think they should be automatic. It's up, it's our money. It's your money. It's these people's money, and the young ladies will soon at least be paying car taxes. Wait till you get a whopper out of that bill, highest in the state. So you have to give, what is wrong, and my question would be, what is wrong with giving power to the taxpayer? It's their money. It's their budget. It's their services. You don't honestly want me going into the town budget and cutting, because you probably would not like the, what I would cut. I believe we need roads, schools, police and fire. Everything else is on a chopping block. And by roads, I also include sewer, you know, the nice amenities in life, because when that backs up, we are fat. I've gotten fatter over the years. Well, this town has gotten fatter over the years. We are fat in how we spend money. Uh, the, um, the attitude is horrible. We'll look at one of the water pollution control meetings. Oh, four twenty-five or four sixty-four, um, your bill, what difference does it make? They wanna be like Glastonbury, they wanna be like West Hartford. Just hit them in the pocket. I'm paraphrasing a little. Said a town council man. The hell kinda crap is that? That's the attitude. It's not my money. We overspend on every, on, on, I'm just about everything here. I know specifically certain items we buy, we spend, we pay a third more than what any neighboring town is paying. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. Why is that? I, I don't understand why that is. So we the tax, we the tax, we the townspeople, taxpayer, needs to have some kind of control. Again, like I said, what have you got to lose? If the majority of town is completely against me on the first referendum, bam, they'll pass it. They'll pass that seven percent budget. I have nothing to say about that. But give them the vehicle in which to do it. We don't have that now. The only thing we could do last time was they passed a ten point two million dollar tax increase. You notice the town side took their three or four million dollars. Don't hold me, right? Ten percent, maybe seven million to Kate. Three million to Mike. He took it. He didn't say nothing. But now he's only giving you a one percent increase, because he knows stuff is tight. People are pissed. Do you know why they're mad? Because they replaced the town council, went super majority one side, the super majority to the other. If that don't tell you something, you gotta give the people a method to voice what they want for services, other than just election night. What have you got to lose?
Tom, can I?
Okay.
Yes.
Tom, can I just clarify one last thing, if it's okay?
Yeah.
Um, after the first and second, I get that they come back with, um, something that they believe the public will take, whatever that number is, it doesn't matter at this point. But for the third one, in order to force a third referendum, you're saying there would have to be a petition or signatures? Is that what you're saying?
Typically, typically to force something, you would need to go out and get signatures to, East Windsor does it. I mean, East Windsor has a referendum. We could look at what they do. I believe somebody said. Somebody said Guilford. Guilford is the city that automatically has two referendums. Town of Guilford automatically goes to referendum.
We're gonna look at that and we're asking the town attorney to give us that information from other towns.
Absolutely. I'm not saying, I, I mean, we can write it out brand new, but if it's, if the eggs already been scrambled.
Yeah.
I'm willing to eat it.
Right.
And East Windsor.
East Windsor automat, definitely has a referendum. They've had it for years, probably my whole life.
What about Ellington?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
They don't?
But I'm just guessing.
All right.
The, the closest one has always been East Windsor, and I'm like, damn.
Bernie does too. Bernie goes to referendum for their budget.
I'm in favor, listen, believe me, I'm in favor of five, or just keep recycling through until you get a number the taxpayer like. I, I'm in favor of five automatic referendums. Or referendum until it passes. I don't care if it takes ten.
Let me throw this out. I, the few towns that I do know, one of the things they do is after that second referendum, it automatically reverts to a two and a half percent increase, period. So just so you, just so you know, that's what some towns do.
Again, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with that.
Yeah.
At least it's a re, listen, it's a reasonable, okay, this year the Republicans, they get high on happy weed. And they pass a twenty percent increase in town budget. You have nothing to say about it.
Right, okay.
What you're doing is you're giving the taxpayer the ability to fight, no, a tyrannical government, in essence, with, in regards to taxes. There's nothing that prevents a, a major, a super majority on that side or a super majority on this side giving us a twenty percent increase tomorrow, which would be about, let's say they wanna take the town over and they want all of the land. People can't pay their taxes. Bam, they come in and start doing foreclosures left and right. You don't think that's possible in this day and age? This is not the day of John Mitchell, Ed Havens, Mrs. Caffin. This is not that day. This is a whole different political landscape.
I don't think that would happen in what you're saying, but okay, yeah.
You have no measure to prevent it. It might be political suicide, but that, but that rate is set unless there's a state maximum.
Right.
That you can rise.
Right.
And I don't know that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, anybody else have any questions, Ted?
Yeah, um, so we have to look at kind of all sides of, uh, every thing that comes up, any, any suggestion. So, uh, my question would be, what happens if we were to pass a zero increase? Or even perhaps a, a decrease in taxes? Under your proposal, um.
One referendum.
Would the residents be able to still vote down that zero percent budget?
Of course. It's their budget, it's their referendum.
Alright, so, so you could actually, the residents under your proposal would be able to actually force a decrease in the tax?
Absolutely, it's their tax dollar.
Okay.
They decide the type of services they want. When I was a fireman in the town of West Hartford, we were told many, many towns, the town has the right to set services. You may have a minimum amount of manning on the, on, online, like twenty guys plus a chief. But we can put you all on one fire truck and a bus. That is their right, they set the services. But the taxpayer should set the amount. And then it's up to the very expensive people that are in charge of the school system and the town to decide what they want to have for a budget. I personally would be very happy to come in with you in the budget with a red pen and show you exactly what I'd take out. Because we are fat, dumb, and happy in this town.
That would be much too long a meeting, Tom, but thank you for the offer.
It'd be very quick.
Hey, we're not sitting on the council anymore. I think they're in the middle of the budget process now.
Yeah. Thank you.
It would be a very quick meeting on my side. But you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, I'm not even against, I'm not even against services now, but you do not give the taxpayer the ability to say no to a budget. They are set up, no matter how nice a super majority or a majority on the council may be, or how, um, un-nice. One can say we're gonna do a zero percent budget increase, yay, I'm all in favor of that. I'm still trying to pay last year's taxes. Or you could say, oh, we're gonna do a twenty percent increase or whatever the state allows for a maximum, if there is even a maximum. You have to give the taxpayer a chance to have a say in the matter, rather than have it shoved on the plate and thrown onto the table as dinner. Let me decide the restaurant. Let me decide whether I want a steak or a salad, depending upon the cost. Might be eight bucks for a salad, it might be thirty-five dollars for a steak. Let me decide, I'm the taxpayer. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Okay, well, we are looking into it, so, yeah.
Thank you. If the taxpayer says, we love the budget that's been presented, it will be voted in.
Right.
Anything else?
Okay, no, I think that's it.
I did feel like kind of a litigator in the Supreme Court, interaction, and I, there's no time limit.
No time limit, you noticed that, yeah? She's advising him. No, really?
I wore a sweater, it's always cold.
Alright, gentlemen, Mr. Gold or? Anybody else want to speak? No?
I didn't, I told you.
I don't know, I saw you giving him some advice in the back of the room. Thank you, thank you. I'll resend it, I, I. Alan one oh three, at Cox dot net. Okay, I will resend it.
Did it go into your junk mail for some reason?
Oh, that could be.
You know what, I, I got it as a TC and it was addressed to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Alan one oh three, yeah, it says it went through.
Okay. How about the other gentleman that's here, you wanna, you wanna speak? Okay. Oh, okay.
I'm gonna send it to him now.
Okay.
Alan one oh three.
So, just to make sure that you guys know, we, other people have brought that same issue up, and we are asking the town attorney to do some research for us about how other towns do that with the referendum. Because there are timeframes that you have to fit into, and it's not as easy as just moving everything back. You know, so you'd have to look at, say, May fifteenth as your drop dead date, we've got to do things by then, for the state.
The fire script said you have a backup plan in place before you get into.
Right, right. Right.
Mr. Gold, did you get it, I just sent it.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So the document that we sent to Mr. Gold is, uh, a project that the Girl Scouts did, a troop in South Windsor, who went through the charter and made everything gender neutral, because everything is referred to as he, or him, or his. And you can see by the, by the, not everybody up here is a male, so. So they went through that, that's gonna be part of the project too, to change that, the wording in the document. Yeah. Alright. If there's no one else here, I think we could probably
Sure.
adjourn the public hearing for tonight, and we'll schedule, or meet our next scheduled time, and I think it's in May. I, I sent you all a copy of the change in time, six o'clock.
Thank you, everybody, for taking that.
Kathy said, no problem, she can change that with the town clerk, so we haven't changed the dates, so it's not a really a major revision, she said.
Right. Um, can you confirm the time?
Yeah. And Michael downstairs, you could shut the recording, thank you.